Kenmore Planning Commission. First item on the agenda is citizen comment. Any citizen wishing to render comment, please step forward to the podium on our left, state your name, your address, and please limit your comment to three minutes.
Ken Lyons.
Good evening Commissioners, my name is Ken Lyons of Bush Law Firm on behalf of AT&amp;T. My address is 17533, 47th Avenue Northeast in Lake Forest Park, Washington, just down the road. First of all, I want to thank staff and thank the commission for this opportunity to speak. Since the last time we spoke, we did have an opportunity to discuss some of the issues that we had discussed in the last meeting with staff, also involving Puget Sound Energy. So we really do appreciate the time that Lori in particular took to talk with us and talk through some of the issues that we were concerned about. And also, I do think this code does represent some, really helps address one of the concerns we have about an exception process. The concern that we have, I think, is that the exception process, in our view, would almost always have to be used. Again, the height limits that are listed in the code, particularly for utility poles, does not really appear to address, really reflect what the Puget Sound Energy, the pole owner, had provided, in particular with utility poles, since the only way you could actually locate a facility is if Puget Sound Energy, A, was going to grant a variance to their standards, and B, if AT&amp;T and other carriers use antenna sizes that are smaller than what are optimal to be able, actually be able to provide service. So that reflects a real limitation, which is why I suggested that the adjustment would almost likely always have to be used. Generally speaking, I think we're still broadly, again, still very concerned of not really being able to have the code reflect really what's a workable system. How do you build a system certainly that protects the aesthetics of the community, but also allows us to be able to provide meaningful coverage? And I would just point, one thing that I think is really reflective of that, if you look at the purpose statement of the code, in three key areas, it mentions that you want to provide for the appropriate location development of wireless communication facilities and locations that promote public safety and general welfare. Wireless facilities are incredibly important for the public safety and welfare. Certainly aesthetics are very important as well, we understand that, but to the extent that we're not able to provide our customers with service, or they're unable to connect to emergency services, or what they're doing, it's very, very important that we, that that balance be struck. And that's the challenge that we believe having with the code. Also, we don't believe the code really encourages location, as noted on B and C of the purpose statement. Then also whether or not we're able to provide efficient services to the city, which is letter E of the purpose statement, we don't believe that those goals are being met either. So overall, we still have concerns about the code. We appreciate the progress that has been made. We appreciate the fact that PSE has been engaged as a pole owner, but we still have a lot of concerns about the code. I will just direct you to just a very short letter that we prepared earlier today, and that should be, if you did not receive it, please let me know, did you guys get it? Okay, thank you. I see my three minutes are up. Thank you, and we're available for questions.
Ken, you're welcome to elaborate a little bit, given that we don't have a lot of people standing in line waiting to speak, so if you wanted to go on about your letter a little bit?
Sure. So, you know, generally speaking, obviously, if you look at the development of most wireless facilities in the Pacific Northwest, in the Seattle area, in surrounding communities, the height limits that are proposed by the code do not reflect either existing development, you know, really how these sites are actually built today. It reflects kind of a, hey, we want to push you to build facilities like this, but it ignores the physics of actually how service is delivered and how people connect to the network. You simply cannot build 35-foot-tall sites if it's surrounded by 50-foot-tall trees and provide meaningful coverage. It's just not realistic. And so, we appreciate the fact that there's an adjustment process to be able to get through that, but if every single site requires an adjustment, is it really realistic to begin with? I think that's really the, one of the core concerns that we were trying to point out in our letter. We also just cited what Puget Sound Energy, we were copied on the emails that were provided to city staff about utility poles, separation standards, you know, height limits, things of that nature. And, you know, and it's, again, we're attaching to their poll. We are beholden to whatever they tell us to do. It's not like we can influence them and tell them that to ignore their own safety standards. And the other challenge with the height limit is it assumes we're only going to deploy one set of antennas. Well, typically, we have to deploy at least two sets of antennas, even if they're stacked on top of each other in a flush mounted configuration, because we're transmitting at six different frequency bands. And frankly, we don't have the antennas to be able to cover all those technologies and all of those frequencies in one single antenna pointing in each direction. So in other words, one set of antennas. The other challenges, I think we kind of listed over here, where we have a, one issue as it relates to the new FCC rule. The FCC rule does not allow local jurisdictions to condition the approvals unless they're objective standards related to building and electrical codes and things of that nature. So in other words, if we had an eligible facilities request, you couldn't tell us to install 20 new trees of landscaping or something that wasn't part of the original approval. So that was one area we were looking for assistance. Also, just noting the fact that the FCC, it's the exclusive jurisdiction of the FCC to regulate interference issues, and so to the extent that there's standards in the code that are trying to regulate it, we were going to request that those things be removed. And then just one thing, this operational, there's no such thing really as a Washington State licensed radio frequency engineer. There's electrical engineers, there's different classifications, but radio frequency engineers are usually some other level of training. Sometimes they have a general radio license from the FCC, sometimes, but certainly there, we want to make sure that our own staff is able to design our network. We don't have to go out and hire a third-party engineer to provide the information that shows why we would need to build a site. So those were the main concerns we had.
Thank you, Ken.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Yeah, that's fine. Go ahead and ask.
So in your other comments, your first bullet, other comments, what do you mean by consistency with the substantial change test?
Oh, you mean other comments, the first bullet point?
Yep.
So that's exactly what I was saying about, in the current draft, there is language that says that the city can condition the approval of an eligible facilities request as appropriate, but the FCC rule, which this is based on, doesn't allow new conditions of approval unless there are objective conditions of approval related to building and safety codes, things of that nature. In other words, you couldn't impose a new aesthetic condition of approval or something like that.
Right, what's your first bullet point? I see the second one, to ensure compliance with generally applicable building structure electrical, but then what's this other one, the number one?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. My apologies. So I think it's the same thing, right? Clarification would state the city may condition approval if needed, one, for consistency with substantial, okay, that's all we're really saying there is that you can condition an approval if it's consistent with the previous condition of approval from the original decision. So for example, the original decision said the antennas have to be painted brown to match the pole. They can continue to require that we say those antennas have to be painted brown. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Yeah.
Anything else? Okay. Anyone else want to ask a question? Thanks, Ken.
Thank you.
Robert Grinnell.
Hi folks, I'm, excuse me, getting over a cold, so pardon my voice. Not back for anything really major, well, hopefully nothing major, just a couple of items that came up as I reviewed this. The first is, I would ask the board to reconsider wording in section 18 dot 60 dot 100, section A regarding amateur radio facilities, just a minor wording change regarding the setback replacing, suggest to replace, shall be located as far as possible from lot lines, et cetera, suggest replacing that with as far as practicable from lot lines. As far as possible has a certain absolutism that could be construed from it. Practicable would allow such factors as remaining layout and usefulness of a backyard, minimizing the length of coaxial cable runs and such like that. So I'd ask the board to make that minor wording change there. Secondly, a new item that popped up, I'm told by staff that they weren't really thinking about amateur radio structures in this, but in the memo, item number three, recommendation to prohibit lattice towers, obviously with the number of examples, I presented, the vast majority of those antenna support structures are lattice construction of one form or another. There are some tubular crank-up type structures. In fact, Brian, the other amateur that was here, actually has one of those, but in general, those don't, those aren't as strong for given sort of base area support and don't allow us to go as high. In fact, I'm not even sure that they tend to go up as high as even the limit that we reached at 65 feet. So it'd be very, very important that we keep the ability for lattice-type structures for amateur radio. So I'd ask the commission if you do engage in any, or do move in that direction for commercial facilities, that you keep an exemption for amateur radio. And also, I can't stick around tonight, so if there's any questions, I'd be glad to take them now.
Anybody have questions for Robert? Somebody? Okay. Thanks, Robert.
Thank you.
There's no one else on the list.
All right. Thank you, citizens. Next item on the agenda is approval of the February 2nd, 2016 Planning Commission meeting minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve? Hello? Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Do I hear any discussion? No discussion? Mike? Mike's got a bad mic. All in favor of the motion to approve, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, raise your hand and say nay. Any abstentions? Motion carries. Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda is the 2016 docket. I invite to the presentation table the city staff.
Good evening, everybody. So while we get the presentation set up, so you might want to raise your screens, this is for the item following the docket, so while we're getting ready for that, just a brief, there's a brief memo in your packet that describes the 2016 docket, which is the work program, your work program. So no surprise that council asked you to finish your work on the wireless communication facilities, which is what you're working on right now. And then the next task would be preparation of a housing strategy plan, and we would probably be bringing that to May would be when that would start, that work program would start. And that's a fairly meaty topic, and if you remember, developing the housing strategy plan was an implementation measure discussed in the housing element of the comprehensive plan. So before we let everybody loose doing that, we will for sure come back and give a refresher on the housing element and some housing data before we start, you know, the meaty work on the housing strategy plan. And we will be working pretty closely with staff from Arch, who will be, you know, helping us with a lot of the technical information. And then lastly, if time allows, we'll be taking a look at the neighborhood business zone. And this is the last zone where we haven't really tackled any changes that might be needed from when this was, when this was adopted, in its old King County regulations. So this would likely involve some, you know, minor amendments to the comprehensive plan and then the implementing regulations. So that might be something we start this year and maybe finish next year. So that's your work program, and then in the memo, it also outlines some of the development regulations which council will be working on, and those are regulations which don't require a comprehensive plan amendment, which is why the council can keep those kind of amendments just under their purview rather than referring them to the planning commission. So any questions about the work program?
Michael?
Just a matter of clarification, under the housing strategy, the last sentence says that Arch will take a lead role in this project. What's the lead role of the councils?
Well, lead role, I guess it would be, they would be helping staff, supporting Lori and I in bringing that information forward to you. They're kind of the experts in the field for housing, so that's what we mean by a lead role.
I know they have programs, investment, multiple cities, expenditures to support their programs, the presumption that Kenmore is going to participate in that, and the work is leading us toward that, or is this more open?
Well, Kenmore is already a member of Arch, so to be a member, we pay annual membership dues, and we also provide a contribution to the trust fund. So Kenmore's contribution to the trust fund, along with other members of Arch's contribution to the trust fund, helps support provision of affordable housing in that, in the east side region that this coalition represents. So the housing strategy then for meeting housing needs and probably in particular affordable housing needs, will first all be looking at what the framework is for that discussion, and then what the recommendations would be for implementation, could be whether it's, you know, financial, it could be development regulations, it could be a whole bunch of tools. So just because Arch is helping us doesn't kind of necessarily mean that the solution will be Arch. They are taking a lead role as sort of a staff representative, so that's what that means.
Anybody else? Carol?
I have a question.
Please.
Since we're not as familiar with Arch as you are, would it be possible, by the time we start that part of the docket, that you could provide us with a little overview of Arch's history and some of the most recent things that they've worked on in the collection of cities that are members?
Sure, we can, I'm sure we can, we can do that. So yeah, I think the reason is that they're supporting us as staff, so it's not, we're not really, we are furthering Arch's purpose, because their purpose is housing, so we're kind of supporting that effort, but really their role in this particular effort is kind of staff support, really.
Right. I might just add, as part of the money that we pay to Arch, one of the benefits that they give back to us is that they act as a housing planner for the city. So they actually have a whole separate staff work program of items that they're going to work on in the various jurisdictions, separate from their funding activities. This is actually a staff responsibility, that's what Debbie's talking about.
And I do understand that. I think it's awesome that our city has that resource and allows us to participate regionally, because then we spend what monies we do have more in line with where the trend is. But I think just for our benefit, since we're going to be helping you with that, or we're going to be working on it together, it'd be nice to know a little bit about the history, if you could provide that.
Sure, I'm sure we can give that as a sort of background.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else?
I had a couple of questions, and I think Debbie, you said that this item on the agenda will be ready for us to analyze in May?
That's when we would start.
So we expect to be working on facilities, communication facilities, until then?
You still have some things to address, you have to hold a public hearing, and then give a recommendation to the council. So being as it's already March, I would imagine that the soonest we could be holding a public hearing would be April, and that's assuming that you get through your discussion in March. So that leads us to May.
Okay. My other concern was, and it kind of relates to what Commissioner Vanderline brought up, is that my recollection from working on and updating the housing element of the comp plan, Arthur Sullivan appeared a number of times, he's appeared in other contexts as well, and Arch stands for Regional Housing Coalition, Regional Coalition for Housing?
Yes.
And his emphasis was on affordable housing, the agency's emphasis, is that right?
Yes.
Their funding responsibilities are, they've worked on a variety of other kinds of things, accessory dwelling units, I mean, they're housing experts.
Right. But they're an agency and they have a certain purpose within the context of housing generally. And it may be that the council's goal is to come up with a plan for affordable housing in Kenmore. Well, that's fine. But it seems to me that there, it's a very complicated issue, there are numerous perspectives on it. I'm seeing, you know, articles in the Seattle Times and nationally that come from different elements of this issue. The housing industry has an interest, property owners have an interest, tenants have an interest, affordable housing advocates have an interest, homeless advocates have an interest, budgets have limits. And it seems to me we've got one agency with its affordable housing perspective driving this analysis, and it seems that it would be helpful if we had other, first that we did not have a lead agency on it, that all agencies had like an equal say in this, and that we had agencies or consultants representing different perspectives on this issue, advising us.
Well, I think that Arch are, say, they're working for all the other jurisdictions, and they're trying to get input from, you know, key players in the housing market to get perspective on housing strategies. So I don't think, and again, I think they are the housing experts, so they are certainly going to be doing outreach, and there will also be outreach like we do with any other topic we bring forward. So I wouldn't say that they're necessarily biased. And I would also like to say that this is a large topic, and so again, before this is handed off to you by the council, the council will probably be giving you some direction in setting what that framework is and what are some of the key policy questions they would like you to address.
So Seattle dealt with this and is dealing with it now, and it dealt with it in particular the context of affordable housing in the city, and I think the mayor a couple of years ago created the HALA Commission, Housing Affordability, Livability, and something else. And I think there were about 25 to 30 members of that commission, not one. And if Arch was the all-knowing expert on this issue, I think they probably would have just called Arch. But they saw it as a much more complex issue, and they had representatives from the building industry and the tenants' union and realtors and other various experts, multiple experts, bringing multiple perspectives. And the, they had a series of recommendations to the mayor's office, but at the center of it was what was called a grand bargain, a compromise among those different perspectives. And I, my hope is that we could try and do something similar. Obviously, we can't afford 25 consultants with our budget and our needs, but having just one seems to me unwise if we're trying to have a balanced policy.
Yeah, I want to jump in here. Arch is not an agency. They are not an agency in the way that some of the other sort of nonprofits work to, with a single task. They are an arm of the government. They aren't an arm of all of the jurisdictions that pay into, it seemed like just a more efficient way for all these jurisdictions to get the housing help they needed, because it is a complicated topic, to pay into Arch and then Arch provides the services back. Arch is very aware of the complexity of this topic in all the different constituencies. I got an email yesterday, as did many other staff representatives from jurisdictions that are members of Arch, asking us to contribute our time to do interviews with a couple of people on a wide list, developers, agencies, low-income housing advocates, there was development companies, there was a whole list of people that they wanted to interview, ask all the same questions about housing, what do you see coming up, what are the issues, you know, what are your perspectives? So we, as staff of all these different jurisdictions, are actually going to be interviewing these people to collect that information. So already, the first, right out of the gate, we're trying to get that broad range of opinion and perspective to present on the topic.
Okay, that's helpful, but it'd be nice also to hear directly from representatives of different industries that have a stake in housing, instead of Arch being the filter. But that's just my point on this. Anybody else have a comment on this? I saw Carol and Mike. Carol, do you want to go, and then we can go to Mike?
Well, I think that's why it would be helpful for us to have a little bit of background to understand what Arch is. Having participated with some nonprofits around the east side, I know that Arch is a widely-used collector of information, and they do have really good resources. They aren't an agency that tells cities what to do. I think they're more or less a resource for staff, but I think if we understood what their history was, what their resource they're bringing to the table is, it would be helpful to us.
Okay. Mike?
I agree that Arch does possess important resources and is useful. My concern is that, at least from the discussions we had with them earlier, that they do seem to have an advocacy or policy bias. And so I think we want to have that resource, but it's going to be, at least in my mind, keep a constant vigilance for what point are we beginning to teeter over into a policy preference that's coming out of Arch versus getting a balanced presentation of the facts.
Well, I also would like to stress that the policy direction will be coming directly from council to you in terms of what the framework is and what the policy questions are that they want you to specifically address for housing strategy. So when the work program comes to you from the council, that framework and the key policy questions will be there for you to identify, will be there for you to address.
Okay, anybody else? All right. All right, does that satisfy that element of the agenda?
Yes.
Yeah, great. Next item on the agenda is communications facilities continued.
Well, good evening. I know that that packet was very large and contained a lot of information, and so today I sent out a copy of the PowerPoint that I had hoped to walk through to at least try to, in some way, summarize all of the material before we dive into all the questions you will have, and then tackle the specific questions in the staff memo. So if that approach sounds okay?
Any objections? Sounds good.
Okay. All right. So the purpose and goals of this project are the same as they were when we first talked about it last November, this slide is identical. So the goal was to provide for wireless communication facilities, encourage their location in non-residential areas, encourage joint use, and minimize the number of support structures, minimize adverse visual impacts, promote safety, and comply with FCC rules. None of those goals have changed. So in the course of all of the policy discussions you've had over the last three meetings, you provided for wireless communication facilities. So now we have different definitions. These don't have to do with the kind of signal that is coming out of the facility, they're more related to the physical form of the facility. So we have identified towers, rooftop antennas, facade antennas, antennas on utility or light poles, satellite dishes, and then amateur or ham radio facilities, which as you know, used to be exempt in the current code, and now the commission has decided to put some restrictions on them. In terms of encouraging the location of these facilities in non-residential areas, the commission had recommended establishing locational priorities. So the first priority for new facilities is to co-locate on an existing tower. Second choice, rooftop antenna in a non-residential zone, then a facade antenna in a non-residential zone, then an antenna on a utility or light pole in a non-residential zone. In non-residential zones, the last preference is a new tower, but it is there. In residential zones, first priority is attachment of an antenna to a non-residential building. The Bastier Water Tower, that's in a park zone, but it's classified the same way, is a good example of that. And then an attachment of an antenna to a utility or light pole in a residential zone. New towers, as you know, are currently prohibited in the recommendation in residential zones. To encourage joint use of facilities and minimize support structures, the first thing an applicant for a new communication facility or antenna would have to do is look at the feasibility of co-location. So we have the priorities established, you'd have to look at where other facilities or possible support structures are located. You'd have to look at where other facilities or possible support structures are located and do an analysis to decide whether you could put your facility on a higher priority location. And the review processes are most intensive for new support structures, new towers. The modification criteria are more relaxed. That's partly because of the FCC rules for the eligible communication facility modification or ECFM process, I'm going to call it the ECFM process. And then applicants for new towers must agree to allow co-location. That's existing language in the code and language that was retained. To minimize adverse visual impacts, we put all of the kinds of concealment elements together in a single code section. We established setback in maximum heights. We specified the landscaping requirements. Again, many of these things were just pulled from the old code and relocated. We talk about stealth installations. That's something that our current code doesn't address, but that's like putting an antenna in a church steeple or something like that. Flush mounting is in the code currently and was carried forward. And then the requirement to remove facilities that are no longer in use also was retained. So that's an existing standard that we retained. In terms of promoting facility safety, we, as you know, must limit our involvement, but we do ask that they comply with the FCC's radio frequency radiation standards. And so that was carried forward with some slight modification of wording. And then the compliance with federal interference rules and regulations. I heard Mr. Lyons's comments. That's something we can check with the city attorney. That's an existing code section, so that's not new language, but is in the current code about interference. And then lastly, we wanted to comply with the FCC rules. So we did add the ECFM process to the code, to spell it out specifically. And then, as you know, we reviewed the standards for amateur ham radio facilities in the context of the FCC regulations for those facilities. So that's just a very brief summary of the changes based on the policy directions that you had recommended. A couple of other components, if there is a conditional use permit required for a new facility, there are new special criteria, other than just the standard city conditional use permit criteria, that must be met. And the current code requires a pre-application community meeting. In some cases, we've broadened that to say that any time you have a project that would require a conditional use permit, you must also hold a pre-application community meeting. And as currently, the city can retain expert review if we need that in terms of analyzing an application. So that is a summary of the many pages of code modifications. You saw the general information is in chapter 1860. We moved the information in chapter 1258, which talks about right-of-way. That is now exclusively a process chapter, so the development standards have been moved into chapter 1860. In the letter, the AT&amp;T letter, there was a comment about equipment location. That was actually moved into 1860 from the right-of-way chapter. That also was preexisting. And then all of the use zone charts, most of them had to be manipulated. There are a variety of places you saw where the changes were required to make everything consistent. So with that, if you have questions, we can do that before turning to the issues.
Any? None? At some point, we'd hope that, Mr. Lyons raised a lot of points in his letter and in his citizen comment, that you could respond to the best of your ability.
Right, I can respond to the best of my ability. I got the letter at 6:30. They sent it at 4:15, so I've read through it, but have had no real time to think about it. I can respond to some of the points right now, if you would like.
Okay. To the commission, if you'd like her to get into the memo or just respond to Mr. Lyons, I leave it up.
Some, mhm, yeah.
Yeah, that might, no, that makes, for efficiency, and I think that's an efficient proposal.
An efficient proposal, there we go.
So let's do that.
Okay. So if we want to turn our attention then to the topics in the memo, I'm going to call that up so those in the audience can see it. So the first, there were five different issues raised as we were developing the code amendments. And so these changes or recommendations are not reflected in 1860, chapter 1860, for example. If the commission wishes to pursue these policy directions, then we would have to write new amendments to go into the code sections. So that's just by way of background. The first issue was allowable height on utility or lightpoles, and you saw I attached the email from Mr. Gasser. That was extremely helpful. So he gave a lot of information about the height of poles, and looking at that information, my conclusion was that the height for distribution poles would need to range from 45.33 feet to 54 feet. And so the staff recommendation was that, in fact, in some of the zones, the 45-foot height be retained, those are the residential zones, single-family residential zones, and the view zones, and that in the other zones, the height be increased to 55 feet. And I know Mr. Lyons has, and the AT&amp;T representative have raised questions about the 45-foot height limit when I said that the minimum was 45.33 feet. However, that 45.33 feet is a difference of four inches, which I felt in these more significant zones may not be an issue. If they could get the variance, for example, from Puget Sound Energy, or if the antenna could be a slightly smaller antenna, something like that, I felt that this was, these were the zones that you wanted to be most protective of. So either they would make those modifications, or they would go through an adjustment process that we're recommending in the next issue. And then the height would increase in those other zones. This would not be, these height limits would not be adequate to put these facilities on distribution poles that would require an adjustment. Transmission. Thank you. Transmission poles. The distribution ones are the littler ones. The transmission are the big ones.
Any questions? Dennis?
I have one. It started off with 65-foot for the every.
Correct.
If we're going to select a number of reasons, is there a reason not to use the same?
Laurie?
I think there are a couple of things going through my mind when you ask that question. One is that we've already heard that these ham radio facilities are not that frequent. They're infrequent, there may not be very many of them. Utility and lightpoles, there are a lot of those in the community, and we're not restricting which ones could be used for that height. We also know from past history that there's been concern about these taller-height utility poles, particularly in single-family zones where there was an issue several years ago about a height. So I do continue to recommend that it be the lower height.
I'm just not totally convinced of that. I'm trying to understand it a little bit, simply because we've been told that the need for greater height is needed for them to be able to have the transmission. And we've talked about the need, you know, co-locating. And if they talk about the need for themselves, they have to, it's too intense because of the range of frequencies that are used. And are we talking about that as a co-location, or we all talked about co-location when you wind down another property seven?
Well, there are a couple ideas. If they're planning to put two layers of antennas on a utility pole, I think they have their own separation requirements, and I would want to double-check that.
It's not about separation when you're separating from your own antennas.
How much?
Maybe a foot.
Just a foot?
If you have different carriers, the separation is more depending on what foot, what frequencies they're transmitting at.
Okay. So if you were doing two eight-foot antennas, that's 16 feet plus potentially a foot or a little bit more. So that would be 17 feet on the pole, above the pole. So that is, that would be.
So 17 feet on a 45-foot pole?
Correct. Right, or if six feet are in the ground, it's a bit less than that, right? So to allow them to do two layers, it would be a tall utility pole. It would be visually very obvious. On the other hand, there's nothing that would prevent them from considering co-location or location on an existing non-residential structure in a residential zone, a church, the water tower, any other building in there that might be a non-resi. So I know that this, the issue of height was raised also with the height limit and making things subject to the height limit, but that's for a new tower. There are other options. For example, putting an antenna on the top of a building is another option that would raise you above the height of the buildings in the area. We're kind of moving off into a different discussion, but I think it's helpful to think of alternatives. What are the alternatives? It's not a utility pole or nothing. It's not a utility pole in an R1 zone or nothing necessarily. I think there are other options.
Did you want to add something?
I'm not sure I have a question, but I'm not totally convinced that I understand this well enough. It just seems to me that our, the need to control these different factors may be creating more inhibitions to their ability to be responsive to the community needs for cellular activity. So I hate to tie us in, not knowing where the technology's going. You know, that's why I just don't like having all these little variations and narrowing it down to the closest millimeter of height. You know, I guess I'd have to go around and decide whether 45 feet or 65 feet makes a bit of a difference. I tend to think that the higher it gets, the less you see it. But that is just me at the moment.
Thanks, Dennis. Anybody else? So do you, so you proposed this, section one in your memo.
Right. So the question is whether the current, the way the current language in 1860 reads is the original recommendation with no additional height beyond the 45 feet. If the commission wants to tweak the language, this is the staff recommendation, but the commission could make a different recommendation.
Right. And that's where I'm trying to get to. It looks like it's time for us to vote on the staff's recommendation. Do I hear a motion to adopt or amend, or an alternative? Commissioner Shrebnik?
I move to accept the staff recommendation. Seems like a reasonable compromise.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? Dennis?
I still would like to go with the 65-foot and be consistent, so that I don't plan to vote for it.
Okay. Any other comment? Mike?
Can you clarify exactly what we vote? Are we just voting on the 45-foot and 55-foot height requirements here?
It's Commissioner Shrebnik's motion.
Yes. Yes.
Commissioner Mulcahy? No other comment?
Sure.
Okay. Here's to bringing into the discussion. All in favor of Commissioner Shrebnik's motion, raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed, raise your hand and say nay.
Nay.
Any abstentions? Motion carries.
The next item was actually something that was raised by AT&amp;T, and they were talking, when we discussed this at the last meeting, we were talking about using a variance as the tool to address exceptions to the rules as they were set out in the chapter. And I think Ken Lyons had a really good point, which is, well, wouldn't it be more useful to have some sort of an adjustment provision that was really targeted specifically to wireless communications? So he provided some information to me. I looked at, they're sometimes called exceptions, sometimes called adjustments. I looked at a number of different jurisdictions, and it turned out actually that the one Ken Lyons had referred me to, City of Salem, Oregon, was, I thought, the most comprehensive and the most useful. So this is kind of a combination of a City of Spokane and a City of Salem, Oregon, adjustment process. So what this would say is that if the, you can't do anything different from what's in this chapter unless you get an adjustment. An adjustment would be a type-three process. That's our most difficult process. It's a hearing examiner, hearing, and that process then would use these criteria to determine whether it should be granted or not. So it'd be criteria specifically related to wireless communication facilities. Now, I want to make one suggestion, and I'm going to ask Debbie, if you can hand this out. So the city attorney has looked at all of this material, and she actually had suggested that, based on case law about this issue of an adjustment and when you should be providing exceptions to the rules, that she had a different take on this language. And she asked me to recommend different language, more specific language, and I'm going to call it up on the screen right here. It's more, she called it more vigorous language, again, based on the case law that she had reviewed. So the critical thing here is that the owner, if they were applying for this adjustment, the owner would have to demonstrate the existence of the following criteria, not either, but both of the criteria, and that it would have to be a significant gap in service. So that's a change. You're now looking at a significant gap, not just a gap in service. And this change would have to be the least intrusive alternative based on a feasibility analysis. Then that adjustment would minimize to the greatest extent possible or eliminate negative impacts to surrounding properties. So this language is, well, more vigorous is the best way to describe this language, but she felt that this was good and would be consistent with the case law she had reviewed. So I do think there should be an adjustment process. I would like to recommend that we use the language as suggested by the city attorney, and what we would be doing is plugging this then into chapter 1860, so that if an exception to the rules was requested, as I said, it would be a type-three land use permit process based on these criteria.
Okay. Any questions? Commissioner Shrebnik?
I have two questions. One is if you could just tell us what the review process for a variance is like, so we just know what we're comparing against. And then the other, I mean, I see where you've kind of defined what intrusive means here, but I'm just feeling like we might want to somehow tie that back to the hierarchy that we developed, and, because that's what we're talking about, right?
Well, the hierarchy would apply, and they have to do a feasibility analysis. You would not jump immediately to this. This would be if, if for This would be if, if, for example, you, there were another facility and you couldn't, I suppose, meet the hierarchy. It would be an exception to the criteria. It's more designed to be an exception to height or setback or something like that, those kinds of standards, maybe a flesh mounting standard.
Yeah, intrusive just seems like a word that doesn't fit the intent.
Okay.
I'm not sure. That's maybe just me.
Okay.
But I would like the first question.
What word didn't fit the intent?
Intrusive, but I mean, that could be just me, how I'm reading it.
Oh, yeah, that's a kind of a commonly used legal phrase.
Is it?
Least intrusive means.
Oh, there you go. But I would like to know the difference, the variance, you know, what is it?
Right. So a variance, and Debbie's going to correct me if I'm wrong. A variance is a type two land use process, so the decision is made after a public comment period by the director of the Development Services Department, and there is an appeal opportunity to the hearing examiner. The type three permit process, which we're recommending here, is there is a public comment period, but then there is also a formal public hearing in front of the hearing examiner, and I believe the appeal goes straight to court.
Yeah, it makes sense. I have a question for Mr. Lyons. It seems like this puts a big burden on AT&amp;T, and we dealt with a lot of the concerns last at the last meeting that you raised, and you've come back to this meeting and you've made a number of technical points. I'm not an engineer. I can't really evaluate the strength of those points, but what I'm trying to do is measure, your concern is that we can't provide quality service in this area for any length of time with these kinds of restrictions. And I know you made that point before, and you've worked with staff and they've made some changes, but, and this exception is one of them. I think that's what you're getting at. You're saying, well, we've got this adjustment process, but it's going to apply virtually every time, and if it does, that means that you're really not suited, your regulations, your basic regulations aren't really suited to what we're trying to do. And my thoughts are, well, our goal isn't just to make it easy for you. We're trying to balance. So that's not in itself persuasive, but I do want to try and measure the burden or the difficulty in providing service in this area. And I don't know of an easy way for a layperson like me to do that. I don't know if staff wants to respond to that, but I'll give you the first swing.
I get to do this Geraldo-style, huh? That's good. And I'll say touche to Lori because I just got this at 7:55. So I'm kidding. Yeah, I think that's a, that's a fair point. I mean, we've been raising these concerns about whether or not we can realistically provide service under the regulations proposed, and we don't believe we can. And that's why we were asking for a reasonable adjustment provision. This adjustment provision is basically the Telecom Act, which is a little odd because it's, you know, the courts have ruled the capacity is a legitimate gap in service, but, you know, if, if this is the standard, this is the standard that basically a carrier would, would take the court, the federal court, to say that the city has basically prohibited or had the effect of prohibited, a prohibition of service. So, and in Salem and in Spokane and other places that have adopted provisions like this, it was never meant to be a Telecom Act provision. This was meant to be a, an adjustment provision that was short of, because again, if you're going to the Telecom Act provision, then you're in federal court, if that makes sense. But anyway, to answer your question, yeah, we've been raising these concerns about whether or not the code is workable, and we thought this adjustment provision might provide a relief to be able to, and it's a very difficult process to get, so you can go through and actually, you know, build a site that would actually work. If the adjustment provision goes away, and this is, it's not achievable, we're kind of back to where we were in the last meeting, whether or not we have, you know, really a workable code to begin with. And we are looking for that balance, too. We're not looking for a perfect code. We're looking for a workable code, you know, that gives us a chance to be able to provide service so we can make our case, so.
Okay. Thanks, Ken. Lori, did you want to respond to that?
Well, I guess I can respond in a couple ways. The adjustment to requirements was, again, something that was from other telecommunications codes, so I'm not sure what the concern is there. Certainly, the city attorney has added in some language, but I'm not sure it's more burdensome than the initial language. As far as the ability to provide coverage, I think that there are options in every zoning district in the city. They may not be the preferred option, for example. Maybe a new tower is not an option, but an antenna on top of a facility is an option. Again, with the height limit, if the height limit in the commercial zone is not adequate, then a building, an antenna on top of a building might achieve the goal. I'm not sure it's a question of whether the facilities themselves are available or a question of whether the facilities that they want to place are available. And I think there's a distinction there.
Any other comment? And thank you for that. Commissioner Vanderline?
Yeah, when I read, I, when I looked at this, I read number one and two together. And when I do that, I thought we have, believe we have a pretty strong process here. We don't have a broad prohibition here against anything. In fact, we're saying in the most sensitive areas of the city, if you want to put a new pole, you've got to go through some extra steps. I think that's what our intent was, and I think by doing this, at least in my mind, it really helps achieve two of the key goals that I was hoping we'd get, which is to create, one, an incentive to go to the highest or newest technology first in these most sensitive areas when you want to add a new pole, and that you look at alternatives that protect those sensitive areas. So I like what you've got here, and I particularly like the changes that have been suggested. I do think this is a stronger language and it's much clearer. So I would vote for the proposal as a recommendation to sustain.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Mr. Mulcair?
Did the city attorney provide any definition around the word significant?
No, she did not. Again, I think it's one of those legal standards. I can certainly go back to her and ask her if there's, or to provide some information on how that was expressed in the court cases.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not sure how, I mean, I'm not sure how that would be...
Measured?
Measured or used. I understand the nature of using the word to make the language stronger, but I'm not sure how it would manifest itself in examining a specific case.
Right. I think it would, you'd have to turn to the court cases, and that's why I'm saying if it would help to provide a couple of examples of the court cases in which this concept was defined, I'd be happy to do, ask her to do that.
If you were doing that, I would also appreciate if you could check on why the words or capacity were removed or struck out. Because frankly, providing coverage without capacity might help one person, but as soon as there are multiple users, capacity becomes an issue, right? I guess as I understand it. And then the third piece on this section that I wanted to understand a little better talks about reliable wireless coverage. And can it be assumed when we talk about reliable wireless coverage, we're talking about voice, text, and data? Is that an assumption we should make? All forms of transmission provided by our wireless providers in Kenmore?
I would think.
Yeah. One could argue that everything's basically data now. It all is basically internet pipe, is what it is. Voice is just another application, just like text or, you know, opposite web browsing and stuff like that.
The reason I ask that, Ken, if I can call you Ken?
Sure.
Is that what you talk about, absolutely, you know, significant gaps in coverage and how that might be perceived by a provider or a consumer. If I'm relying on voice as an application, that's one thing, and it requires a certain amount of bandwidth, and that might be easy to achieve with a certain set of poles. And if I would like to use your services for 4K data transmission, that's going to require a lot more. And if I have a high saturation of neighbors in my residential neighborhood that would also like AT&amp;T to provide 4K data transmission to my neighborhood, that's going to require a whole lot. So those sort of elements are missing for us, right? What is the...
That's because in a lot of ways, I'm sorry. Do you want to speak to your phone, please? Sorry. You know, we have basically pre-iPhone case law. You know, that's basically what we have. Before the iPhone came out, you know, the Telecom Act was adopted in 1996. Certainly, some of the court cases that define what's a significant gap, all those types of things, what's coverage versus capacity versus technologies versus frequencies, you know, that stuff, you know, some of these issues were discussed before the iPhone came out in 2007. To your point, you know, we, carriers used to have networks where one frequency would broadcast, would basically handle the voice traffic, and we'd have an entirely different frequency and technology handling the internet traffic or text traffic, and all that's going away. So in the next, you know, couple of years, everything's going to be, it's all internet-based. The voice is all going over like a voice over IP, a voice over LTE. Everything is so, if somebody is trying to download a 4K movie, to your point, you know, it's using the same network as someone making a phone call. So whereas we, there is some capacity maybe to be able to prioritize things like voice calls, it's going to affect it. So you could see dropped calls, dropped data transmissions, certainly things like that as a result of really how the technology's changing. But this, this type of language in terms of this represents basically a reality that doesn't exist anymore. It, and it changed with the iPhone, and it changed with how people use their phones today versus maybe where we were 10 years ago.
I have one more comment on this section, but I will just mention that I'm a primarily home-based technology worker, and having access to a strong cellular signal to my home is not only a nice to have, it's what allows me to stay employed. So I look at these things from that view, and I think a lot of my neighbors do as well. And I think as we have looked at some statistics about Kenmore generally recently, we're seeing a great shift in that direction of home-based technology workers, not all relying on Comcast and cable modems, but many relying on cellular service.
Thanks, Mike. Commissioner Baker?
I actually have one other comment.
Oh, yeah, please.
There is in section A1, the final words there are wireless coverage within a building, and I was wondering why we were drawing that distinction of within a building. You know, one of the things I would hope to see is us taking our wireless devices out of doors and hoping for the same great service in Santa Edward State Park that we get.
Do you want me to?
Sure.
Okay. So, so signal strength obviously loses, you lose signal strength as it passes through obviously things like building walls. So the question is, and again, you know, there were some codes probably back in the early 2000s, late 1990s where they said, okay, you can have wireless coverage, but you can only have it strong enough to be able to make a car, make a call from your phone, from your car. So you wouldn't even actually be able to make a phone call from your building. That was the standard of service and is measured in really the signal strength. So what this establishes is that, you know, reliable wireless service means you get in-building coverage, not in-car coverage or standing out on your, on your deck, make a call type of a signal strength, but signal strength that you can actually have reliable service inside of a building. And it's important, like you were mentioning, in residential zones, certainly that's where the huge growth of wireless is right now. And think about Kenmore, if you look at a map, probably 85% of the city from a land use area perspective is probably residential. It's, you know, there's obviously commercial areas that are sprinkled here and there, but as far as like land use area, it's certainly the predominant area, so.
Any good? Okay. Commissioner Baker?
Since AT&amp;T is rolling out their new thing, that they're going to be competing with cable business via wireless, which obviously will mean more capacity, so you can do more stuff with your iPhone, can you talk to us a little bit about what you would really like to see in our code that you don't think is there? Or, you know, you made the statement that some of what we're putting in our code is based on old ideas. Could you actually present what you think the new ideas are and why the exceptions and the variance clauses seem to be cumbersome?
Sure. I'd say that the best way I can say, I'm sorry if I should stand up or sit down, I'm not sure what's easiest, but...
Be official.
I think that it's fair to say that most codes that were written probably around between 96 and 2003, they tend to say, okay, we want a location-based code. We want you to put all your sites in, in commercial areas and then basically beam the signal towards, you know, residential areas so that there's no actual facilities in residential areas. And it, you know, frankly, with the growth in the, in the network, and certainly where we're going, obviously with 4G LTE, and as we start talking about 5G, and you probably have read some stories about that, you know, the, people want to use their phones wherever they happen to be, and that includes in every part, every nook and cranny of Kenmore, where they, where they live. So we've seen mostly codes move towards more design-based codes. So basically, in residential zones, the trend is that we don't build monopoles, but we build stealth facilities like, like monopines or monofers that if you put them with, you know, other trees or something like that. Utility poles work great, again, in most communities in Pita Sound, that's really how we serve a lot of residential areas by utility poles. I will say, though, that Kenmore's code doesn't provide the height that's allowed either to meet the separation standards or to actually be able to provide that service when you compare it to, I think, every other community I can think of in the, like, for example, Woodinville allows an additional 30 feet to the 65 feet that you're thinking about. King County allows 40 feet. Bellevue allows 21 feet. There's all these different, even Kirkland allows 15 feet, but it's not capped height-wise where you guys allow 15 feet, but it's really capped at 10 feet because the poles are 35 feet. So constructively, you don't get more than 10 feet, right? So it's, those are the types of challenges where we, we want the opportunity to be able to provide service where the demand is coming from, and, you know, the idea that we're going to go through an alternatives analysis, and we certainly will, but, you know, we have sites in all the commercial areas already, you know. We're going to go through, certainly have to go through an alternatives analysis to show that we go into a residential zone and show we've made a good faith effort, and we will. But the challenge, the challenge is, is that we're not going to put sites where we already have sites. We're going to be putting sites where there either is a coverage gap or there's a capacity gap or something that's, that's there. We do expect, you know, just like we saw with, I'm sorry, this is a long-winded answer, but...
No, this is great.
You know, in the last 10 years, we've gone wireless only, you know. The numbers are staggering, you know. We were a landline society up until about 2003, and then really the accelerant was 2007 when the iPhone came out, but we've gone wireless only and gone away from landlines as our primary means of communication. We could see the same thing with wireless, with broadband internet, because when you think about the, the cost of extending fiber to everyone's home and things like that, certainly if you're able to, as we move toward these technologies, we're talking about multiple gigabits per second, you know, the same thing will have, consumers will ask the same questions that they did about phone. Why would you pay twice for your home phone and your cell phone? Why would you pay twice for internet from your, you know, from one provider versus another? So those are certainly the dynamics that are happening in the industry that are shaping this, and I would really encourage the city to adopt reasonable limits, or reasonable, grant reasonable areas, allow us more access, because the more flexibility there is, the more opportunity you're going to actually find a site that has less impact. You know, I can appreciate locating on a building, but how many are, are non-residential structures in residential zones really all that well distributed across the community? I mean, there are some. I can certainly think of them. I, I drive through this area all the ti- I drive through this area all the time, I've owned property here. But, you know, utility poles is probably the likely destination for most sites in residential zones, just because, you know, the likelihood that a non-residential building's going to be in the same location where you have these needs. And again, our search rings used to be a half mile wide. You can find anything in a half mile and build a site. Now the search rings are like a couple of blocks. And so you have a very tight parameters because again, you're building sites within an existing network where you have all these fixed points where service is already being provided. So hopefully I haven't rambled on too much. Does that answer your question?
It does. I think, you know, we have an opportunity to hear what it is as a facility provider you are objecting to and to modify our language. I can also see on the city side, you know, we want to protect our views, we want to protect our neighborhoods so that they don't have unsightly things dangling off every vertical structure, you know. I can see both sides of this coin, but how do we write this language so that we're protecting the future? Well, we don't even know what that future is really going to be. And I think the other thing that comes into play is we all realize that technologies do change. I mean, you cited it right now, that, you know, very few of us...
And what we voted on before, the variance process. Again, I think we just, you know, the variance process was more burdensome, this is less burdensome, so we're making two fairly substantial accommodations.
Accommodations to the industry.
Exactly.
Thank you for bringing that up because it's really hard to know exactly where we're drawing the lines.
Right.
But I will say, go ahead, Lori.
Could I just interject here? Actually, as written, the adjustment process is more difficult in terms of the public hearing process.
Oh, right.
Than the variance.
The criteria may, correct. The criteria may be more useful because it's pointed to the wireless communication facility.
So here's why two relates to one. I'm okay, well, if we're putting limits on the industry under proposal one, but they have the ability to appeal that and satisfy an exception and it's a reasonable appeal opportunity, then the limits are more acceptable. This looks like, particularly with the city attorney's changes, a very, very limited appeal opportunity, which makes number one more onerous. So that's why they tie together here and that's why I'm uncomfortable with the limited knowledge we have striking these lines. If the city attorney had left this language alone, I might be more comfortable with that. In fact, this wasn't part of our materials. We got it tonight. So I'd like to digest this a little more because they relate to each other, but that's my, just my position. Any other discussion? Go ahead.
I absolutely agree. As I said earlier, I really read one and two together. Just as you described it, number one lays out the criteria, number two really opens up how we're going to move forward in an area where we don't really have a lot of information. I'm willing to, if people want to wait to hear more, but I don't think we're going to satisfy ourselves.
Yeah, I agree.
And so I like the idea of using the exception process to have an open, public discussion, have technical experts come in and say, okay, on this set of facts, knowing what we know then, not now, make a decision. The one change I would make is when I read this, I do agree with Mike, the capacity is an issue. I'm a stay-at-home technical worker too. Coverage is important, but you know, if I don't have proof, what, I have nothing. And I do think that's an advantage to the city's economic development. So I would put that, that we'll read back, propose that as an amendment.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else? Yeah, the things in the city attorney's changes that bother me, because a lot of them are pretty good. I really like least intrusive alternative because I want them to be, stick to the best, you know, I want them to come as far as they can go and still satisfy their consumers and provide coverage. A significant gap, I don't think we're going to get a definition. And even the case law may not have a definition. And these cases go to trial judges and they decide for themselves what they think is significant.
Plus they're lagging behind.
Yeah, and they're lagging behind technology. And when you get on, if somebody appeals a trial judge's decision, then it goes to the appellate court. And those are really the only decisions that have presidential value and the appellate judge isn't going to get into the facts as much as a trial judge because that's what trial judges do, they create a record from which the court applies, to which the court applies the law in appeal. So I don't think we're going to see from case law a definition of significant, and most laws are like that. When you see the word reasonable, clear and present danger, things like that, it's what a judge thinks at the time in the context of those facts. So that bothers me. I'd like, I think I'd like that stricken. I'd like capacity put back in, not because I understand exactly what the merits are, but I trust what Mike says and I trust what Carol's saying and I trust what the other Mike is saying. I think it's as important as what is left in the language. So at least those are two things I think I might want changed. But I'm brainstorming here and I think what we need is more input, if we can get it, and particularly with respect, can we measure how much burden we're putting on the industry? How much service may suffer? And I don't think we can, but I'm just going to throw it out.
Yeah, what I'm going to say is that I have asked folks, what is your future? And the answer is, it's constantly changing or it's proprietary. I can't get beyond that.
I'm not surprised. It's worth asking. Go ahead, Mike.
In the spirit of brainstorming, when I think about just the market, community realities, I don't think that AT&amp;T or anybody else is going to want to put up a new poll unless there's demand out there among folks to want that. In which case, making the case for coverage or capacity limitations at a public meeting, that's going to be made pretty obviously already and I think that's the process we're putting into place. If the demand isn't there, then you're going to have a very quiet public meeting and this probably isn't going to go very forward. But I don't see that as being the issue. I think that people would be very vocal on this very quickly. I think there would be evidence on AT&amp;T's side to be able to present that without too much difficulty in that pre-public meeting. And this ought to be a pretty closely run and efficient process.
You know, I think part of the problem, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no, I'm done.
Thank you. Is that we're going to take this, you know, we have, at least I do, and I think Mike and some others have some objections to the city attorney's language, but the city attorney's argument is, oh, we have to do this because of case law. But I think Mr. Lyons' point is, you don't, this is just the most extreme restriction you could impose for an appeal, and I tend to agree with that. Mr. Lyons, do you want to comment? I see you got the mic ready to go there.
Yes, sorry. I'll stand up. I feel like I'm at a political rally. Sorry. Town hall or something.
It's Super Tuesday.
Yeah, it is Super Tuesday. Yeah, I completely agree. This is a telecom act test. And again, the whole significant gap, it had to do with coverage. And when as case laws evolved again around, you know, capacity really being, how do you measure a significant gap in capacity? And that's why the word significant was stricken. So again, you know, this is, the language that you see in Salem, that you see in Spokane, you see in Hood River, certainly, you know, it's kind of very similar language. It's not meant...
I agree, but I want to point out that the changes that we have made have been in response to direction, policy direction from the planning commission. Staff is not, staff had a higher height limit, for example, on utility poles. Our recommendation was higher. So I want to make it clear that it's not that staff is here fighting the telecommunications provider.
I know that. I know that.
And thanks for making that point. Commissioner Stradnik, did you want to comment?
Um, yeah, well, I actually...
I thought I saw your hand up.
Well, I don't know how much of a question, it's actually a question...
You're on the fence, aren't you?
Well, no, it's just actually I have a question for you about the word significance because I do not, I mean, I do understand it's a legal term of art, but, I mean, the absence of that though, I mean, they could just say, there's a gap, we don't have to justify. I guess what I'm trying to ask you is, the presence of the word significance, doesn't that simply mean they have to kind of make a case that there's something more than a little? You know, that there's something notable about the gap?
Yeah.
That justifies that.
Sometimes the word material is used instead of the word significant. Material means it's a really, it affects the value of the product.
Yeah, that would be a good word. But I mean, significant is important too.
But I don't think it would...
I mean, but I think the significant kind of take on that role that they have to essentially just make a case that it's important to do.
It's a high, it's a much higher standard than just saying there's a gap. The reason I challenge significant, besides the fact that it's vague and you're at the mercy of what a judge thinks under the circumstances, which can be good and it can be bad, but it certainly creates uncertainty, is that if they show, without the word significant, they still have to, look at all the rest of it.
Yeah.
Provide the least intrusive alternative and to demonstrate that, they have to provide a feasibility analysis which provides a meaningful comparison of the feasibility of alternative facilities and site locations, and the adjustment would minimize to the greatest extent possible or eliminate negative impacts to surrounding properties and their uses. So even without significant, they really got to clear a lot of hurdles to get that location, to get that extended additional height. So then you throw significant on it and, you know, they can't even get to the second hurdle if they can't make what a judge thinks is, an argument that they're materially uncompromised from providing service. So, but go ahead, Lori.
I wonder if I might have a suggestion for how we could move forward with this. If, if possible, if the commission was comfortable, perhaps we could divide it into smaller bits, knowing that I'm going to come back with different language ultimately. So for example, the commission could decide, do we or do we not want an adjustment process? Okay? If we don't want an adjustment process, it'll stay with the variance and we'll move that way. If we do want an adjustment process, then a second question might be, how significant should this process be? Should it be a type two process or a type three process, for example? A third point might be, should the gap in service, if that, if we agree that that's something to look at, should it be significant or not significant? You see where I'm headed?
Yep.
I mean, if we could make a series of very small decisions, maybe we could get closer to a final decision and then I can collect information from the city attorney and we can revisit the topic.
I agree. Any objections to that? None?
We draw my motion.
Okay. I think that's where we're at then.
Yeah, it is.
If nobody objects to the motion being withdrawn. Okay. Dennis, you have a pregnant look on your face.
No, that was a pleasant look.
See, I, I'm a little dyslexic, so that's why I got that wrong. Okay, so I think you have the direction on that. Does it make sense then to go further in the memo?
Well, I don't think I heard the answers to these questions. I was posing them as questions and if the group, for example...
So let's take up each, okay, so the answer to your proposal is yes, let's break it down because I heard no objection to that. So I think the next point is, let's take each broken down piece...
Right.
And respond to it.
So, adjustment process.
Anybody?
Do we just vote here?
No, I want to let a little bit of discussion go. Somebody had a comment first and then we could vote on it. Go ahead, Carol.
I think there should be an adjustment process. I think what we came up with just prior to this meeting is quite cumbersome when you look at the variance process that was there before. Because it has pretty specific criteria, but it's not, I guess what I don't want to see happen is that we go, we move from creating tools that the city can use to have a direct communication with the facility and have very specific things laid out for what that adjustment would look like. So that that conversation could take place and a public hearing could be held so that the public can be involved, but to minimize the public feeling like there's not a process for them to have input, I'm kind of wanting there to be a city and facility communications processed for an adjustment without it being too burdensome. Can you talk to us about that?
No.
Okay, you can't.
Okay.
Sorry.
That's okay.
I think, I think that I've heard pretty much from everybody that there needs to be adjustment to this language.
Yes, there does.
But I can't prepare it here on the fly.
Okay.
And so it would really help me if we walk through some basic decisions and then I can, in the quiet of my own cubicle, try to come up with something that fits better and with a response from the city attorney.
Okay.
So...
Right, and I appreciate that. And I know it's 8:45 too.
Yeah.
The only question I had, something that Carol sort of touched on was, I don't, I didn't have a chance to read the variance process, which you put in here so we can compare them, but I, my, from my experience, legal experience, it's really a really high threshold to meet typically, and that's why we want an adjustment process. Is that fair to say?
Right, and I think it's fair to say that it doesn't point to wireless communication facilities the way this, this is kind of a variance. I mean, I think this is more directed toward the use. I think it would be more helpful, however it comes out, it would be more useful and helpful than the standard variance process, which is designed for any number of change, group changes.
Okay. Were there any more questions or discussion? Go ahead, Mike. Before we vote on this one, sub issue.
Just answer the poll, yes to, we have an exception process. What I heard you say though was really a breakthrough that I thought we didn't, maybe an option I thought we didn't have. Because if we could go to a type two process, which I believe is public...
It's a public comment period and it's written, it's not a hearing, it's just written. And then the director of the department makes the decision.
Well, a public hearing, you have to do three.
Correct.
I thought I originally heard you say that given the rules we're dealing with, it had to be a three. But you're saying we have, we have the potential for specifying a two rather than a three?
You could.
But you're getting to what the adjustment should be, not whether we should have an adjustment versus a variance. So let's vote on that, unless there's any other comment. So all in favor of having an adjustment as part of this, raise your hand. Okay, so that settles that.
And then if you had questions about whether you want a public hearing or just a public comment period, that would be helpful.
Okay. Somebody want to say something first before we vote? Dennis had his.
Just a question.
Yeah.
Is that something within the director's prerogative to decide after they receive comments whether they would want to move it to a type three?
No.
No.
Okay. Thanks, Dennis. Go ahead, Carol.
I just think that in prior city history, there was sort of a resistance on the community for these facilities to even be there. But we've moved into an era, 10, 12 years later, where I doubt there would be resistance to the degree that there was before. So I just think having public comment is very important. It allows the public to participate, but it can move the process forward within the exceptions process.
Anybody else? Commissioner Stradnik?
Are we ready for a motion? Because I think the motion is actually whether we, what kind of public comment? Is it written or hearing? That's type two versus type three. So, correct? Isn't that where we're at? Yeah, so I would propose that, I mean, we can then discuss, that we have a type three something, a type three process with language yet to be tweaked for providing this adjustment.
Thank you. Mike, did you want to? I saw your hand.
If you're ready for comment, quick question.
Are we, yeah, we're ready for, I just want people to be able to say their, whatever they'd like to before we vote on it. Or, you know, by mere raising of hands. I know there's, but I just don't want to cut anybody off.
Is it a motion?
No, we're given direction.
Never mind.
We're sort of in that gray area. But Mike, did you want to say something?
I'll just get my question up. We're talking about type one and type two, or type two and type three. Where does that come from? How is that defined? Is that something we've created for ourselves, which means we could redefine it?
It's in, there is a, there's land use processes in a different section of the code which spells out sort of from the simplest, type one, which might be a simple building permit, all the way down to a type five, which is, what is that? Is that the complan?
Not plan amendment.
Complan amendment process.
The planning commission docket item.
So type two is typically, it's like, it kind of like a degree, the higher the number, the more complex the process. Because usually it's more, the more complex the underlying decision that you're making.
Yeah, no, and I get that, but what I'm trying to get to, do we have the ability to be able to create a new type or to, we have a stipulation there?
You could do it, I strongly would recommend against it.
Yeah.
Just because it's, it's in an entirely different chapter. All of the requirements for the processes are outlined and specified in that chapter. And to create a new process for one type of a permit, I think, would not be useful in terms of trying to simplify and streamline the code.
So maybe another way to look at this, let me try this one. So maybe another way to look at this, let me try this one on you. If we go to a type-two, it's a written comment, the decision maker would be the-
Director of Services.
Of Development Services.
Is part of the director coming to that decision, would this be something that would end up on a city council agenda?
No, no. It would be appealable to the hearing examiner.
Everybody ready to cast? Deborah, you have a comment?
Well, I would just suggest that we have three, because this is the kind of thing that the public likes to have input on, and if it's comment, oftentimes, people kind of find out after, I mean, they do with hearings, too, but they find out kind of late, and then they're busy.
All right. Anything else? All right. So I'll put it in these terms. All in favor of a type-three review process, raise your hand. Okay, all in favor of type-two or other? Okay. We had a majority on three.
Okay. So the next, I'm just trying to break this down as simply as I can, but I think that you were interested in whether or not the term significant gap should be used.
Anybody want to respond to that? I've already said plenty, so I'm not going to elaborate. All in favor of striking significant? Raise your hand. All opposed to striking significant? Raise your hand.
We abstain.
Go ahead.
Because one of the options I thought was getting more information on that piece, but maybe not. Is that not-
Well, that's a fair thing to ask. You want to ask the city attorney if we can get more information on it?
Okay.
My objection was simply because I didn't want to just see it stricken. If we have better wording-
An alternative, maybe.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
Like material?
Material, you know, you're, you're the lawyer in the room, so you-
I, actually, I think the word material, at least in other legal contexts, has more legal, has more case law defining it. In securities context, it's in particular, it's well-defined.
Okay. So I'm going to ask about material, and we will try to get more information from the city attorney on this and the relevance of significant.
That doesn't mean we're going to adopt it, it's just-
Correct, yeah, no, I understand that.
Test it before we-
I know, it's providing more information.
All right.
Okay, so the other language that I heard some comments about was coverage and capacity. And I think, I heard several of you say that you thought that the language should include capacity as well as coverage. I'm seeing a lot of nodding heads, but does that mean that everybody thinks capacity should be included?
Unless somebody wants to say something. Dennis? You ready to vote?
We're ready to vote.
Okay, all in favor of adding capacity?
Okay. All right. The next piece of language had to do with least intrusive alternative. I heard some people say that they thought that that was a useful part of the criteria, and others say that it didn't really fit the intent of this section.
I've kind of taken that back. That was my comment, but once I understood, I, yeah, sorry.
No, I appreciate it, and I'll just say that I would prefer taking out significant and leaving in least intrusive than to have significant without least intrusive, because that really forces the carrier to minimize the impact and still get, be able to provide service. And I think that's one of the key goals of this whole-
Yeah.
-chapter we're doing, is we're trying to help them do it with the minimal burden on the rest of the community.
Okay, so I think I am seeing enough nodding heads to say you like least intrusive?
Well, let's raise hands for keeping least intrusive, so there's no-
Okay.
Okay.
All right. And then the last clause that I was, well, I didn't, actually, I didn't really hear any comments about that. Okay, so those were the things that I had called out, but that was off the top of my head. You may have other points that you want to bring up at this point. Otherwise, I'm going to collect the information, try to tweak the language, and come back. Next one.
And then we had three and four that have not been answered by what we've just covered, so we got to take those up, but it's 8:55. Does anybody want to take them up next time, March 15th, or you want to take them up now? This is the Bob Seeger, this is the Bob Seeger rule. I know it's late, and I know you're worried.
I make a motion that we wait until our next meeting to cover three and four.
Okay. Any objection? Go ahead, Deborah.
No, I was just wondering if we can get a picture of the, I'm trying to remember what the lattice actually is like.
Right. You probably most frequently think of them in terms of electrical transmission-wise. You know, they're, they're sort of triangularly shaped with crossbars-
I think they had four feet-
Right.
With like cross-
Right.
Beams, steel beams.
And we saw lots of different versions of lattice.
Utility wires, there are often utility towers, really tall ones.
Really, really big ones?
Well, that's a lattice. I'm just saying, but, doesn't mean it's that tall, but a lattice-
Right, but it's the structure. As opposed to a monopole, which is just the one thing in the middle. I can provide pictures. I'll get some pictures.
Okay, but does, do others concur that we should set this over for the next meeting? All right. That settles that. So, lest Lori wants to say something else on this topic, I think we've satisfied-
Thank you.
That item on tonight's agenda, which I'm looking for without success. I'm pretty sure there's nothing else, right?
No, I think it's-
Anybody got an agenda?
It's adjournment.
Yes, it's on the front right here.
Oh, yeah. I found it. Adjournment is the next item on the agenda. Okay, next item on the agenda is adjournment. Is there any new business? There being no new business, I hereby adjourn this meeting.
Our hand guy wanted a couple modifications, so I just want to make sure those go on our next one. The camera yoga guy wanted those couple of modifications. So as long as they get on our next meeting agenda.
He wanted an exception from-
Yeah, I do, Robert Brunel.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.